Alan, are you saying something?
Yes, I hear you now.
Okay, yeah. The mics weren't on at first, so we're gonna start now.
Great.
Recording in progress.
Welcome everyone to the Planning Commission meeting of September fifteenth. Can we do the roll call?
Commissioner Chan?
Present.
Commissioner Quigg? Commissioner Wong?
Present.
Vice Chair Choi?
Present.
Chair Davis?
Here.
All planning commissioners are present with Commissioner Wong attending virtually.
And with that, I am to read this now. The city staff has received a request for virtual meeting participation under AB twenty-four forty-nine and the Brown Act for Commissioner Wong. Commissioner Wong, there are a few legal requirements to participate remotely. We have prepared three questions to address these requirements that we ask you answer. Please generally describe the circumstances related to the need to participate remotely.
Yes, I'm remoting due to taking care of an elderly parent.
Thank you. And you have audio and video, and it will happen through the whole meeting. You don't anticipate any problems. Lastly, please disclose if there are any individuals over the age of eighteen present in the room, and if so, the general nature of their relationship with you.
There is no one else in the room?
No one else is there. No further action is needed if the requestor is joining under just cause, which they are, and we're good.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. With all of us here, next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Alrighty, agenda review. Do we have any questions on the agenda or reasons to shuffle it? Nope? Okay, terrific. We have one set of minutes to approve from August eighteenth. Any corrections, questions, or motions?
Yes, I believe under the Planning Commissioner announcements, Millbrae Volunteer of the Year Award winner Shari Teresi's name is misspelled.
You're right.
It should be S-H-A-R-I and T-E-R-E-S-I, I believe. That's what I have in my, I just searched in my email, and that's what I found, yeah. Oh yeah, it's actually in the announcement to...
Oh, there you go. Here. S-H-A-R-I. And Teresi is T-E-R-E-S-I.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for catching that. And with that change made, anything else? Oh, we have to do all voting this week because Commissioner Wong is remote, so we have to do everything verbally tonight.
Move approval of the minutes with the changes.
Thank you.
Second.
Kathy, we're not doing the buttons.
Oh, sorry.
No buttons, Kathy. Not this week because of Alan being remote. We have to do my voice. Okay, so we have a motion?
Second.
And a second? And your votes?
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg? Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Choi?
Aye.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you. Public Communications is up next. This is time set aside on the agenda for the public to address us on a topic that is in our purview but not on tonight's agenda. Are there any speaker slips or hands raised on Zoom?
There are no speaker slips or hands raised on Zoom.
Alrighty, moving on from that. Next up is a public hearing for one thirty-one El Camino Real. It's a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit to allow the installation of an approximately three hundred square feet outdoor produce display area along the sidewalk fronting on an existing grocery store, Sun's Market, zone residential mixed use within the Millbrae Station area specific plan.
Yes, I believe I live too close to the project site to be present for the discussion and vote on this item. So I will...
Well, you will step outside and not listen to us, and we will call you back when we are through. Thank you very much. Alrighty. Does the... Yes, you're there. Staff report? Thank you. Close the door.
Hi, good evening. Taking the time to hear. Hello. Good evening, Commissioners. The project before you today at one thirty-one El Camino Real under project number two zero two five three four is the consideration of an outdoor produce display along El Camino in front of the Sun's Market. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. All right. Sun's Market has been operating at the existing address location and has requested to extend its produce display area of approximately three hundred square feet outside the immediate entrance while maintaining ample space for pedestrian traffic. The location identified on the screen is the approximate area for the produce bins and produce display shelves proposed by the applicant. This is a site plan identifying both the internal area of Sun's Market as well as the approximately three hundred square foot produce area that would be approximately five maximum produce bins and two to three produce shelves. Next slide. The zoomed-in area identifies the availability of pedestrian, a walking area that will be free and clear for the duration of the produce display setup. The setup will occur at the opening, prior to opening each day, and stowed away at the end of closing each day so that the sidewalk is maintained free and clear for evening pedestrians. Next slide, please. The picture on the left is the current display area with state-required parasols to cover any produce that's out in display. On the right is an example of the proposed cardboard bins that will not have any markings that are conditioned to be replaced if they are damaged, torn, have any type of liquid stain. Next slide, please. These are the two produce bins that would be displays at the store's entrance. And again, just like the produce bins to the north of the entrance, they would be put away at the end of each closing every day. Next slide, please. So I ask that... So the findings for the conditional use permit is that the use as proposed would not be detrimental to health, safety, morals, comfort, general welfare of the persons residing and working in the neighborhood, that the establishment maintenance or operation of the use applied under the circumstances of the particular case not be detrimental to property or improvements in the neighborhood for such proposed use. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the project, consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving a conditional use application to allow the display of produce at the market entrance located within the Millbrae Station area specific plan under the residential mixed use. Bell for any questions.
Does anybody have any clarifying questions? Yes?
So it seems like the plan and the photo suggests this, but I'm gonna ask anyways. Have we confirmed that with the display in place that there's still a clear path for wheelchair accessibility, path of travel?
Excellent question, Commissioner. The Building Department has also reviewed the proposed plans and stated that up to sixty inches from the entrance of the door remain free and clear of all produce displays, and that at least a sixty-inch path of travel along the sidewalk remain free and clear for duration of the day while the produce displays.
Right, thank you.
Sixty, sorry.
Six-zero.
Five feet.
Yeah? Okay.
When these items are out on display like that, I heard you say that there was something to protect the sun, but does the Health Department look at anything like that when it's outside?
The particular regulation in effect is a state-mandated regulation for food safety and handling. There also is San Mateo County's Health Department also regulates how food handling is placed in the store.
Do inspections.
And they might pass by it randomly. That's why the awning and freestanding parasols, which also would be removed at the end of the day, are there to cover any uncooked produce.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lee, do you have anything you want to add? Or do we have any questions for the owner?
Both Ms. Lee and her husband are here to provide any statements or further explanation. Oh.
Okay.
Today I'm here representing Sun's Market, and we are proposing a plan to display our products in front of our stores, which are the drawings that were submitted last month. We believe that our outdoor produce needs to be displayed in order to attract customers by creating a visible and interest in our products and display its value. The display racks and the stands are gonna make it look a lot better to make it look well organized and more of a comfortable display. It ensures that the shoppers will have a more enjoyable experience in browsing on our products, leading to a better customer experience. It would also create, like, it would make the value of our products shine out, which will influence the product's purchasing decisions. Going forward with this plan would improve the social interactions and also would promote the local and economical growth for our city. And it would also leave eight feet of walking space for the public to file shopping.
Thank you. Can I ask one question? Hopefully none of the fruits falling on the ground and making a mess, but how often do we clean the sidewalks? Is there a schedule or just as needed?
Yes, so we have employees scraping the sidewalk with brooms, making sure that there's no produce on the ground. And if there is, that we'll tell them and make sure to use detergent to clean out the rocks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't know if it's a question. Thank you for your presentation. You did very well.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's not easy to get up there in two beds, so... Right now, what you're showing us is lovely. And I've had... I've driven around and gone in different neighborhoods, and the displays are wonderful. I've also gone around, and the nice boxes and bins get kind of torn, and the stands, the shelves get not so nice. And pretty soon, it doesn't look so nice. What you're showing us is fabulous, and I have no problem with it. And Maureen's question is very good because probably gonna have to have the street power washed, I would think, with so many people. I'm anticipating great business for you. You know, things, you know, produce is not the cleanest product, you know. So I have some concerns about that. Is there any way that we can, and I'm asking, and I'm sorry if I'm moving around, but of staff to monitor?
We've actually included a condition in attachment one number five. All produce bins and stands must be maintained in a neat, clean, and sanitary condition and in good repair at all times. Any carton-style bins, except for any signs of damage, including but not limited to staining, discoloration, tearing, graffiti, or structural compromise, must be immediately removed and from service and replaced.
And I understand. How do we monitor it? Because it's... What one person thinks is not good anymore, the other person says it's fine. It's so subjective. And I'm only bringing this up because we have a few others in town showed us pictures just like this, and it doesn't end up being like this. So I'm glad we have the condition there, but how, you know, is this subjective? What can we do any more than that?
By approving this conditional use permit, they would be subject to code enforcement, inspections, and action. What would typically occur is a call from the public informing that this particular operator is outside of their conditions of approval and that a code enforcement officer should come by and act. It would be then that the code enforcement officer would make a determination that those produce bins should be replaced per the conditions of requirements.
Okay. I've just encountered it so many times, and it's just kind of annoying, but it's subjective.
However, there is an enforcement mechanism, so that if it's blatant, it can be corrected.
You know, when the fruit is outside, especially in the daytime, it gets leaky and, you know.
So, and that's why we wanted to include this.
It takes a lot of attention, is all I'm saying.
Definitely, and that's why we wanted to include that condition so that it doesn't deteriorate over time, and it's not a subjective issue.
Thank you. Commissioner Wong, I don't want to forget you're out there. Do you have any questions? Clarifying for now?
No, I don't have any questions for the applicant.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any others? Good? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next up would be public comment. Is there any speaker slips? Hands raised?
We have no speaker slips or hands raised.
And do we have to vote to close public comments? Me too. Get a motion? Okay, motion?
I'll second.
Second? And your votes?
Commissioner Chan? He's lying. Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Choi?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes four-zero-one. Public comment is now closed.
Thank you. Now it's time for discussion. Motions? Anybody? Commissioner Wong, do you have anything you want to add?
I think that just a couple of comments. On this walkway in front of the building, there's, I know there's plenty of space in the diagram and the schematic shows about seven feet of walking space in front of the storefront with the carts there, so there's, boy, there's plenty of space. I think that there's activity in the market in that area, and I think this would liven up the area. I think that it behooves the owner to keep it clean and presentable and to attract business. I have no doubt that they'll do that. The awning and the covering looks a little bit to me like a temporary situation. I'm not sure about all the rules and regulations, because even if they have an awning or storefront awning, you know, at certain times of the day, you get the morning sun and maybe shining through onto the produce, and then what are you gonna do if you're moving your awning and your umbrella? So, but I'll let the regulations govern and dictate how that's done. It would be nice to have a little bit more permanent awning there. The carts are nice. The bins, hopefully, if they're on pallets, they're easy to move and move inside each day because they look pretty heavy. But other than that, welcome this. I think that, you know, we're always striving to have, you know, street bears and concessions and good traffic, and I think this could add into that as long as we abide by the rules.
Thank you. Any else?
I'd say I think the display as shown to us in this presentation, and on most days, is fabulous. It's a great identifier of what the storefront is, of what the building is. In fact, I think it's more effective as an identifier than the signage is at this location. It does liven what that frontage of the building is. I share Commissioner Quigg's concern about keeping cleanliness. I think because it's a multi-unit housing, I think the neighbors would be as concerned of them more than we are, and they'll, certainly, I'm sure they'll bring it to the business attention as well as the city's if something doesn't seem right. And then, of course, I want to make sure that the streets are kept clear to make sure that it's well maintained. Of course, to Commissioner Wong's point, it's to the business benefit to keep it in proper order. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll move. I will move to approve the conditional use permit application. Oh, this one? Okay, application to allow the installation of an outdoor produce display area along the sidewalk in front of an existing grocery store, Sun's Market, zone residential mixed use within the Millbrae Station area specific plan.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And our votes?
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Choi?
Aye.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes four-zero-one. With Commissioner Chan recusing.
Thank you. The action of the Planning Commission is considered final pending a ten-day appeal period and the payment of a required appeal fee. For anyone that wishes to appeal the decision of the Planning Commission, please contact the city clerk at six-five-zero-two-five-nine-two-four-one-four or ETRAN at ci.milbury.ca.us with appeal process questions, or visit the City of Millbrae website at ci.milbury.ca.us.
It's such a long website.
Alrighty. Next up on the agenda is eleven-hundred Millbrae Avenue. This is a public hearing on a design review permit application to allow a net one-hundred-and-ten square foot reduction and interior remodel on the second story and a nine-hundred-and-thirty-three square foot rear lower floor addition to an existing, excuse me, two-story residence and a conditional use permit application to extend the existing non-conforming upper story side setbacks in the single-family residential R-one zoning district. Jennifer?
Good evening, Chair Davis. Jennifer Lim, Associate Planner with the City of Millbrae, and tonight I will be presenting the project at eleven-hundred Millbrae Avenue. This is a public hearing on a design review permit application to allow a net one-hundred-and-ten square foot reduction and interior model on the second story and a nine-hundred-and-thirty-three square foot rear lower floor addition to an existing two-story residence and a conditional use permit application to extend the existing non-conforming upper story side setbacks in the single-family residential R-one zoning district. So this map shows the project's location. The project is located in the Millbrae Highlands neighborhood. So this property is zoned R-one single-family. It's a corner lot about six-thousand-five-hundred-seventy-seven square feet. The existing residence is two stories, about two-thousand-five-hundred-fifty-eight square feet, and the project proposal is for the construction of a one-hundred-and-ten square foot second story reduction and a nine-hundred-and-thirty-three square foot first floor addition to an existing two-story, single-family residence. So this is the existing site plan. The existing home is two stories. However, it lacks upper story side setbacks. Next slide. This is the proposed site plan. The second floor addition is located in the rear. The front yard landscaping and rear yard open space requirements will be met, and a new street tree will be planted in the front. The proposed first floor plan includes a living room, two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and attached oversized one-car garage. The proposed second floor plan includes a primary bathroom, primary bedroom, a powder room, living room, dining room, and a kitchen. So this is the proposed front elevation. The proposed residence is a two-story contemporary-style home featuring horizontal siding on the second story and a stucco finish on the first story. And the home will also have a gray-colored shingle roof. The vinyl windows will also be recessed with the ebony color trim and shutters. So the proposed left-side elevation, the existing upper story left-side setback is not met. The proposed project is extending the existing non-conforming side setback, which will require the conditional use permit. The existing upper story right-side setback is also not met, so the proposed project is extending the existing non-conforming side setback, which will also require the conditional use permit. This slide also shows the outlines of the neighboring windows and the neighboring structure. The proposed project will not cause significant privacy impacts. So the proposed rear addition, the proposed height will be increasing by two-and-a-half feet, so that's from twenty-one-and-a-half feet to twenty-four feet. As shown on the proposed left and right-side elevation slides, the proposed addition is extending the existing non-conforming upper story side setbacks on both sides, therefore requiring the conditional use permit. In order to meet the upper story side setback requirements, the proposed upper floor would need to have a minimum four-foot side setback on both the left and right sides. However, the existing home in... Um however, the existing home and surrounding homes in the neighborhood lack upper story side setbacks. So allowing the conditional use permit will be in keeping with and maintaining the character and design of the neighboring properties. Here is the proposed three D rendering. Um the proposed project will enhance the existing features of the home. So a total of six adjacent owner consultation forms were sent out to the adjacent neighbors. All six of those forms were returned in support of the project. And I would just like to note, the property owner of one hundred Monorca Way supported the project with the condition to keep work trucks off their side of the block, if possible during construction or at least during the nighttime. So this map shows um the project site in blue and the adjacent neighbors in red. All six of the neighbors returned their forms in support of the project. In order to approve the design review permit, the planning commission must make the following form uh findings, number one and number two. Also, number three and four. Um the planning commission must also make the conditional use permits on the screen, number one and two. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission receive the presentation, review the project, consider the public testimony and approve a design review permit application to allow a net one hundred and ten square foot reduction and interior model on the second story and a nine hundred and thirty three square foot rear lower floor addition to an existing two story residence and a conditional use permit application to extend the existing non-conforming upper story side setbacks in the single family residential R one zoning district. Um so staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you, I have a question. Why are we calling the front of the building the garage side that lives on Monorca? And the sides of the building, especially the front door facing Millbrae Avenue, which is the address, calling that the left side of the building?
Yeah, so the.
That is where I got confused.
The zoning code um specifies that the front of the building is the narrowest side facing the street. So that that's the narrowest side of the lot um facing the street.
So because it's on a corner, it gets a weird definition?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
That's what's confusing.
Yes. Any other questions? Oh, you sat down, I don't know, are there any other questions? Commissioner Wong has a question.
I guess um. Looking again at the um left side of the building. It extends back towards the west and on the grade and slope. But it appears that the second floor is actually ground level. Can you comment um on that? If that is a second story, the rear is ex- is actually ground level or considered ground level? And does the setback for second story apply if it's not really? You know, um appears as a second story upgrade?
Yeah, so the existing um lower floor just consists of the garage and crawl space. It's um a split level home. So as you can see on the elevations, the first floor does have a eight foot um height. So we're considering that the first floor and then the second floor is where the primary bedroom is.
Is that the first floor partially sunk in below grade?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Quigg?
I do. Why is it um an oversized? One car garage?
Yeah, so the zoning code requires a two car um side by side garage that's completely enclosed. So that would be a four hundred square foot garage minimum. Um so this house has is proposing a four hundred fifty eight square foot um oversized one car garage because it doesn't meet the dimensions of a two car garage, which would be twenty feet by twenty feet. Um this project has about twenty four feet by eighteen feet. So technically only one car would be able to fit in there. Um so we're calling it an oversized one.
Is it because they've got items on in on the side there?
Um there is a washer dryer um on the side, but the dimensions of the garage um do not meet the twenty by twenty.
But that's the new code, it's it's a non-conforming two car garage.
Yeah.
Okay, so it is a two car garage.
Yeah, but only one car could fit in there.
Well, I think cars can fit.
Um the width of the proposed garage is only eighteen feet. So we um calculate um a two car garage by twenty feet by twenty feet.
Yeah, but that's what we have and we've got two cars in there. Without the washer and dryer, um. Have they only been using it as a one car garage? Or is it now because it's too small for a two car garage?
Um I don't, does the applicant want to address that?
We'll we'll ask that question later. When when you're done.
Oh, is he the?
The architect?
Okay.
But um did you follow the question? It sounds like the one car garage definition would meet code in this case, correct?
Um it meets, it's over four hundred square feet, but um it's just shy of the twenty by twenty square foot requ- requirement.
Okay.
Yeah.
And. A house with two car garages always much. Um that far up off El Camino. More desirable. Um I remember some of them. Uh because I went home and I measured my one day. Uh and it's it's basically small, but it's considered um non-conforming. I I don't know, it just seems that there's an awful lot of wasted space and have your cars outside. Now with the washer and dryer, they're.
The the dimensions of the garage are not a square by twenty by twenty. So they can't drive two cars into it. And maybe you've got two small cars, you can book them in, but it's they're calling it what it is.
Yeah.
A big one car garage.
A big one car garage.
Any questions at this end? No? All right. Um would the architect like to come up and say anything extra, add anything additional?
The owner Chuck uh Yuan and his wife have lived there for forty years, um it's uh the late eighties. And um. Uh they, it's a it's a very modest home now. Uh you know, that that first level is only the the only usable kind of space on that on that building. The garage, the garage level currently, it's just a, you know, it's a. Intended for one gr- car space, but then in the back it's just a crawl space. It's just not usable. So now they're gonna build this big basement um to have more uh bedrooms for extended family. But while also kind of like maintaining the character of the building. Right, so it's not a significant exterior alteration. It's very, you know, it's it's more of a like a subterranean um uh uh extension or addition. So um you know, we're keeping the gabled roof, we're keeping the brick chimney, we're keeping the brick entry stair. So so it it very much replicates or you know, kind of maintains that aesthetic that you see all over the neighborhood. Um but while also giving them a lot of space for extended family.
Thank you.
And he's a, so he's a plumber by trade and uh he has these wide van, he has a wide van that with all his uh materials. So it is a, it takes a a lot of that garage to a single car. It's rough.
Thank you for that information. Commissioner Wong, do you have a question for him?
Uh yes, just to confirm, well, with the architect, so um just confirming that there's really no change to the fronts or the left side exterior um.
Correct, correct, yeah. Uh with the exception of a a window on the left side in the back, that's gonna be altered. Um but other than that, the footprint itself is not extended.
And just left in just a little bit of the belt and the new paints insideing?
Yep, yep, maintaining the the shutters and all that, uh yeah, the look will. So the the in the back portion, uh oh uh in the back portion on the right side, um where where essentially there's a there's a jog in the building existing. And we're we're gonna straighten that out. So that's, you know, that and it's already kind of, uh it's a non-conforming condition. But it's it makes it a nice seamless or consistent um exterior wall on the right side. That's that's the the footprint change on the second floor.
Okay, and then um there's a drawing eight two, it's a uh existing demo proposed side elevation. There's kind of a dashed outline, uh I guess that would be the existing. But it doesn't appear that that uh outline matches the existing house. Um can you comment on that?
This is. Sorry, this is the adjacent neighbor to the uh, I guess, when your fa- what, sorry?
Okay, so that's the outline of the neighbor's house.
Yes, 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 yes. Yeah, essentially a privacy study, just to make sure that our windows don't align with their windows to create some privacy issues, but we're, they're not. Um there will not be any privacy issues with with our with our addition or with our with our window scheme.
Okay, thanks for explaining that.
Questions? No? No? Excellent. You do? Okay, go ahead.
Um just first of all, thanks for getting the consultation forms from the neighbors. Um seeing unanimous support from the neighbors is a strong endorsement uh for any project. So thanks for that. I have a question on the roof, um the roof line. So I noticed that on the front and the two sides, there's a one foot overhang, but on the backside, there is no overhang. Could you explain that?
Um. Good question. Um. I think because we were maintaining the existing, or do you? Oh. Uh I believe because there is no overhang existing of the rear facade.
Mm-hmm.
That we maintained that.
Okay, I I would suggest, it's not gonna optimize decision one way or another today. But I would suggest look into that, especially since it looks like you'll have gutter on the two long sides.
Right.
Um so just make sure that the 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 water, what the drainage is 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 considered correct.
Collection of uh uh roof waters considered.
And I want to make sure that um you, I noticed you have two window wells um to allow for the windows from the bedrooms.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that you do have drainage from those window wells as well.
Correct, yeah. And good thing I'm an architect and engineer.
There you go, excellent, perfect.
I designed both uh scheme, yeah, waterproofing and drainage and retaining wall systems and all that.
Thank you.
So that's all. All me. But um yeah, so so the back of the bill, completely subterranean. So so yeah, that hence the window wells.
The bottom.
Yeah, yeah, the bottom floor is uh one hundred percent underground in the back. But that's where we have window wells for light ventilation and and rescue.
And I appreciate a project like this where you're investing to create more living space without.
Yeah.
Impacting the exterior, um so thank you for that.
Yeah, no, no, that was the intent, yeah.
Thank you. All right, I think we're done there.
But there's a little slope, but.
No, there's a bit of slope.
The slope is gone, yeah.
Right, it goes from like a like a two foot retaining wall to a a full ten foot retaining wall. So it's it's quite a quite an excavation, but uh we have a good team. Safety and all that, so.
All right, thank you. Okay, public comment time, are there any speaker slips or hands on Zoom?
There are no speaker slips or hands raised on Zoom.
All right, thank you, can we have a motion to close the public comment?
I make the motion.
I'll second.
Kathy and. All right, we have our votes.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Choi?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes five zero, public comment is now closed.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Maybe a motion? Nobody has anything else to say? Pretty easy project.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
It's a good project, oh.
I'm uh I'm moved to approve the public hearing on a conditional use permit application to allow the installation of an out, oh wait. Sorry.
It's okay.
As soon as I saw it, I thought, wait a minute, this isn't the project. With an outline, no, no, no. Public hearing on a design review permit application to allow a net one hundred and ten square foot reduction and interior remodel on the second story and a nine hundred and thirty three square foot rear lower floor addition to an existing two story residence and a conditional use permit application to ex- extend the existing non-conforming upper story side setback in the single family residential R one zoning.
Thank you. Your second?
I'll second.
Okay. Vote?
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Choi?
I I.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes five zero.
Congrats. The action of the planning commission is considered final pending a ten day appeal period and the payment of a required appeal fee. For anyone that wishes to appeal the decision of the planning commission, please contact the city clerk at six five zero two five nine two four one four or ETRAN at C I dot Millbrae dot C A dot U S. With appeal process questions or visit the City of Millbrae website at C I dot Millbrae dot C A dot U S. Thank you. New business? We have none. Staff updates?
Our next meeting will be on October sixth, uh Monday, October sixth. Um we had a previous meeting in August where an item was continued to a date certain, that date is uh October sixth. Um the item is the uh local um density bonus ordinance. Um the city has updated that ordinance uh in accord with a public comment that was received. We only received one. Um and uh it will be coming back to you for finalization uh in your recommendation before moving forward to council at a subsequent meeting. That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Any announcements?
Just the volunteers of the year awards dinner on the seventeenth, and we hope you can all come. And congratulate.
Also, let's recognize the Japanese Cultural Festival on October two and Millbrae Gateway Night Market again on October third.
Thank you. Anything else? No? No. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.